Okay, we'll get started here. For the pre-meeting, we have to start with the sole source purchase request.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everybody. We have a request that we'd like to get your support for as it relates to a plasma cutting table for our solid waste division. And in dealing with some of the repairs, it tends to cost quite a bit of money. We're hopeful that with respect to this purchase, we can save those dollars and put them elsewhere. If I could, however, turn some time over to Andrew to kind of walk us through this sole source request, that would be probably more helpful.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we did try to bid this plasma cutting table out. We actually had zero bids, so this is why we're coming to you now for a sole source request. Roughly every four thousand hours or every eighteen months, we have to get new wearplates for the baler, and that costs us roughly the neighborhood of ninety thousand dollars. If we can do that and just have to buy the wearplate and cut it ourselves, we could save that cost, and we get down to about sixty-five thousand. So twenty-five thousand dollars every eighteen months, we can buy this plasma cutting table for fifty-four thousand, so just over three years, we will have paid for this plasma cutting table. So that is the justification for this request. We did try to bid it out. It's not uncommon for people who are unaccustomed with our bidding requirements, you know, bid bond and all that kind of stuff to go, ah, get it when not bidding. So this is why we're bringing it to you now. It's a local vendor, a good price. We budgeted, I think, ninety thousand dollars for it, and we're just coming in at just over fifty-two thousand. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew, with regard to the concern that if indeed the bidding process were kind of a deterrent for people to participate, how do we know that we wouldn't have competing vendors participating versus the one that you're recommending today?
We reached, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, great question. We did reach out to all the local vendors, and this was the best price we could find. So we went to all the local vendors when we went to a sole source type of purchasing.
Should this really be in solid waste? I know that's where the justification is, but is this something that all departments within the city could be using? And so should it wind up actually being in the maintenance garage where they could wind up cutting parts for the plows, the motor graders, extra tips for the backhoe buckets?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'd love that, then the general fund could help purchase this, and not just the enterprise of the solid what?
All I'm asking is, is that to me, for this type of a piece of equipment, there are a ton more uses, and are we going to get into a turf war then between, say, solid waste, I don't mean solid waste, uh... Streets or the waste disposal over at, you know, all of these other different departments, because it is solid waste, and solid waste paid for it. No offense.
No, it's an excellent question.
The turf war comment, certainly it's going to be housed at solid waste probably, but no doubt any division within the city could utilize this same plastic cutting table as the need might arise.
And are you going to put that word out to all of the departments?
The grounds knows about it because they were very excited.
Apparently, they already know.
Okay. I see Tim really rubbing his hands, okay.
That's a verbal contract.
Very good, and we all heard it here. Very good.
Yeah, it was kind of along the same line as Councilman Kathy, but we might see a lot of money on red on edges too, for the blades.
For the mold boards?
Yeah.
That's what I was kind of referring to.
On to the bandwidth logic problem, or project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This particular item is one that, in my estimation, is a really helpful way of getting some really useful infrastructure put in place up at the event center. And bandwidth logic is a group that can help us do that if council agrees with the agreement and the idea and everything else. And so if I could get Tim to kind of walk us through this a little bit, we didn't want you to be unaware as to what this is and what it means and how it could help us.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is kind of a neat project. If any of you have visited the event center recently, and you've got a couple thousand people in the building, it's really hard to send data-driven things from your portable devices. It's basically a Faraday cage that installs the rebar and all the steel girgers and everything from the building, and so cellular devices just really don't work that well. What this is, it's called a DAS, which is a distributed antenna system. What it does is it basically puts little access points around the building strategically placed, they're about the size of the, you know, like a couple shoeboxes. And then they all get hardwired into a head-end unit that'll be located in a room that, you know, probably about half the size of this, with different racks of electronics for each carrier. And really, what's kind of unique about this is that instead of becoming key and saying, hey, we need to buy this DAS for our building so that people can be sending stuff throughout the events that they're attending, the way this is structured is that we get into business with a third-party like bandwidth logic. What we did is we went out for RFP, and they were the ones that kind of delivered us kind of the best deal, if you will. We kind of, for lack of better terms, I'd say we're issuing them a fishing license. They go out and they try to solicit people to come onto the thing, so AT&amp;T and Verizon and Union Wireless, they want to try to get those folks to basically say, yeah, we would like to be part of this system, and we're going to help pay for the system. They pay for it, basically on a monthly basis, so that their customers have that access to that superior communication system. And so, basically, it's kind of a really a no-risk proposition at this point, meaning we just say you can represent the city, hopefully you can get some people to jump on, we can build this thing, we would get the solution in place, and then after the equipment's all paid off, which is around a half a million dollars, then we would start to receive revenue from that company. So as they get revenues from the carriers, they would split that revenue with us, and the way that that deal is structured now is sixty-forty. They would keep sixty percent, we would give forty percent. So not only would we get the solution in place, but we would also see some revenue after the system were getting installed. If after two years, they can't get invites and we want to try to issue a fishing license to somebody else, we could do that, or I could come in front of a body such as this and say, hey, we still need a solution, we tried this, we couldn't do it, is what that option looks like. So kind of in a nutshell, that's kind of the way the deal is. It's one of the features of it that is kind of, I want to bring your attention to, is that it is a long-term, meaning the rationale is, is that you have to recover the costs of the capital outlay, which is a half a million dollars, so therefore it takes probably a few years. So what you'll see is it's a ten-year agreement with an automatic tenure renewal if both parties are amiable to that. The equipment would be all theirs, the space which it's housed in is all ours, usability and everything is all ours. So it's kind of a partnership that's kind of just probably different than what we typically do. So with that, I take any questions?
Will it be forward compatible with 5G?
Well, the answer to that is me. What, the way the deal's structured is, is that periodically, which the carriers are going to require as well, the carrier, they're going to put in the latest and greatest technology, and then they have to make an agreement with the carriers to see when they might want to convert it to say something like 5G or 7G or whatever that twenty-year, basically, you're looking at twenty years, like what does it, what does it mean? So I can't say that it would be, because we really don't know. By the time it all gets installed, where we're at with technology and what goes into it, I really couldn't tell you.
I guess I just have one comment. We're talking about looking what it's going to be like twenty years from now. Twenty years ago, you could live without, you could live through a two-hour performance without having to call and text and do whatever. And to a point, I guess, I kind of like the quiet, so to speak, of the event center, you know, so, but I won't vote against it, because ultimately it could, but I just, you know, you used to have to go find a payphone someplace if you wanted to make a phone call, you know?
A what?
Exactly.
Explain to me what that is. What is this?
Pony express.
But just, I just had to throw that out.
Just to be real clear, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, when you say that it's a no-risk proposal, can you tell us real quickly what you mean by that exactly?
It doesn't require any funding from the city, meaning we don't have to pony up for marketing or any staff time or any capital, it is all on them. The only thing that they have to really risk on their end is the staff time and stuff like that, but that's where they would eventually recover, should they get some carriers on board. But, you know, this is kind of a common way to do a feature like this, like Spectra has done this in other buildings throughout the United States, so to pay for infrastructure like this in this manner is actually pretty common. But sometimes they don't have any carriers to sign up, they just say, hey, the project's tier H, we're not interested, which is a very good possibility, come back to this body in two years and go, hey, we haven't gained anything, but we haven't lost anything. Here's what we may look at for maybe the next step.
So if I follow up, if I could, Mr. Mayor. So Tim, are you saying that if indeed we can't get any carriers to play ball, does that mean that the improvement doesn't happen?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We basically need one carrier to jump onboard, and then at that point, it becomes a feasible project, and they start doing it, and then they're going to hope to get two, three, obviously it's more revenue than carriers.
Councilman Bell.
You answered my question about other facilities.
Councilman Bates.
Well, we would have to front the five hundred thousand?
Negative. Only if we didn't have any carriers jump on, then the fishing license basically goes away. Then I might have to come to you and say, hey, if we want this feature in our building, it's going to cost us five hundred thousand, but you're talking two plus years out, and hopefully this works, because everyone, it would be beneficial to everyone.
If I may, my only concern is the long-term contract. I don't know, I'm not a contracted guy that, for long terms like this, because a lot of times contracts can bite you in the butt in the long run in all honesty, so I don't know enough about it to say yea or nay, I just, my, one of my biggest concerns would be how long of a contract this is for the city. Because as you said, if they don't buy the two years, we're under contract with them yet though, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we would be out of the contract in two years if we decided they couldn't get it done, or we thought either another company could get it done, or we just want to pay for the capital out there ourselves, the contract is no longer good. It's only, it's only good for the ten and then another ten. If we get carriers onboard and the project is feasible to get put in, and the cost is absorbed by land with logic to the tune of a half a million dollars.
Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry for that.
Councilman Hayes.
Mr. Mayor, so, and I know you said this, and I missed it, if carriers start, do start signing up, then how long does the contract go for?
Then it would be a ten-year with an automatic tenure renewal.
So then we really would get into the long-term that Councilman Bates is talking about, and that does cause a little bit of reservation, but, you know, if these people put money into it, maybe they just would have the right to expect that. I guess one follow-up question. How would this affect, like, say, if somebody wanted to have a meeting down there and they wanted internet access for their meeting? Would that have to go through this, or would that go through the, is there other internet access in the building that the convention's meetings or whoever can use?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, yeah, you basically have two options at this point, which is Wi-Fi, which we have in the building, you can access that, or you have your cellular data service. This one only applies to the cellular side of the...
So this would not impede or affect the city's right to have a Wi-Fi setup in the building?
Can you just clarify, Tim, that once that is paid back on that contract, then it's, money comes back to the city? It's a split, so it actually...
Forty percent.
Yeah, that contract, more carriers get on faster, gets paid off, the quicker the city will actually start making money off the contract. Councilman Bates.
With that contract, with that tenure, if they got on, are the carriers under that tenure contract as well, or is it just the city?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, it's just us, because they might set up an entirely different contract with, say, Verizon, which could be an entirely different contract with AT&amp;T. They do all that side of things. So for us, it's just with bandwidth logic.
Anybody else?
When, when does it come forward?
Today.
Okay, so tonight.
It's on the concept.
So councilor can decide.
Just wanted to give you background to make sure you're reading this.
Give you the heads up.
Thanks.
Okay, and on to agenda review. Anything of concern tonight, or anybody want to have discussions on prior to?
Mayor, the only suggestion I was going to make, and I know I made this the other day in our meeting, we had at the beginning before the first and first communication, they can't pick thumbs up, my suggestion would be to just make an announcement that if anybody's here to talk about the LGBTQ committee.
Wait till...
To wait till we're going to be having that discussion, that'd be my only suggestion. I know I mentioned it the other day too.
Absolutely.
Meeting too, so.
Mr. Mayor, I passed around a rant about the planning report that's up for us to adopt tonight. Many of you have heard me talk before, I considered that East Belt Loop Road in that area out there to be a really important thing to the community, because I think that if we don't do some planning about how to have orderly growth out in that end of the world, that we just run the risk of the city of Casper's growth ultimately being choked in that area. I was reading the detail of that plan in that report today, and frankly, I was shocked at some of the language that that consultant put in there. For instance, where he talks about that there was a backlash from the city against this, not a backlash from a few landowners or anything like that, but a backlash from the city of Casper, and that this was contrary and not in keeping with a multiple of growth plans and other kind of plans that the city has adopted over the years. I think that those statements are simply untrue. I think that they're, you know, I, I, I just was shocked by them. And I think that I'm going to propose that we either table this, send that back to them to straighten that language up, or that, as I said on the second page of my diatribe there, rant, or whatever you want to call it, that we go in and that we delete, I think it's three pages, three paragraphs in there that refer to that project out there being in violation of the city's stated growth plans and all kinds of other things. Because I don't think that the city has ever said that we don't want to have orderly traffic, orderly growth, things like that. I think that there have been things where the city has established priorities for redeveloping certain parts of the core of town, but I don't think that we've ever said we're going to abandon any plan for growing the geographic area of the city. And that's clearly what the language, if you look on page two sixteen and two seventeen of their report and their plan, that's clearly what they imply there. And to put it real bluntly, that East Belt Loop Road out there has been a part of every traffic plan that there's been for this area for fifty or sixty years. They've reduced that down to a totally, you know, absolute bottom of the priority list, which I can understand if that group, you know, I didn't go and I didn't partake in those meetings, so that's my fault. But if they want to reduce that down that much because the local neighbors out there have objected to it, that's one thing. If they want to reduce it down to that low priority because it's a high-cost item, that's another thing. But to dress that up and walk it around and say that there was a backlash from the city, and that it's contrary to the city's stated growth plans and things like that, that is inaccurate, and I think that that is something that could later on, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, really come back and bite any growth plans for the city in a real serious way. And so I have a real serious objection to that. I think that that language needs to be scrubbed out of there in any event.
Councilman Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carter, do you remember, because when this was a very public matter, that East Belt Line YDOT had a reaction to all of that public comment as well, did they end up deprioritizing based on those comments, or did they make some decision as to whether they were going to pursue that? Do you remember?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, they did move in the direction of deprioritizing that project, but the city of Casper did not take a position on that project, certainly to the extent, as Councilman Huber correctly identifies, that we spoke out against it, that that was not the case. And I wouldn't even say the state of Wyoming spoke out against it either. They, they, I think the way you put it, deprioritized, is probably an accurate assessment.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, you know, the language in that report is not that it was deprioritized, it was that the city of Casper, that there was a backlash from the city of Casper about this, and that it goes on that it's contrary to the city's stated growth plans and things like that, which to me was just shocking.
Follow-up, I think what I recall is that we received complaints from, again, two or three landowners. That's what I remember. So I agree with Councilman Huber that this was not the city of Casper or a broad rejection. It was, in all likelihood, just a political decision that this was not worth fighting. That's my guess, but certainly not, you're absolutely right, that was not a backlash of the city of Casper.
You know, leave it at that, that's fine, but all the gratuitous language that they put in there, my humble opinion, which you all know is very humble, that's just not only unnecessary, but it's frankly inaccurate.
Well, my other concern would be too, is that, you know, YDOT has it someplace in their scheme of dollars and money, and if it's, as you stated, I can see YDOT just totally blowing it off, and it taking then another thirty years to get it back.
Fifty years.
Fine. But I can, I can see it taking an inordinate amount of pressure to get it back onto that, because I think, when's the next long-range plan due, like in ten years?
Five years, is that right, Liz?
Yeah.
Five more years.
Okay. But, so, yeah, so basically, I can see YDOT totally dropping it, which is not really where we, for the long term of Casper, we don't need YDOT dropping it.
Right.
And as you stated, is that initially, when it came up back ten years ago, maybe, they were...
Was that long?
No, well, it's been up twice. But the first big time was, they were talking about putting the bypass kind of right down that power line right away, which started splitting the residential and everything, and there was a big brouhaha from the residents of the east side at that point, because of where it was in relationship to all of the residential, the golf course, and everything else. This latest plan going out, coming off of the high point up there, basically going around south of everything, I think is exactly, as you were stating, it's those ranchers out there that don't want a road to their ranch.
Understandable.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, if I might just add one other thing. What really scares me is that someone down the road could say, oh, and look, aha, see right here, back in 2020, the city of Casper really didn't want this, we, they, there was a huge backlash, and all this other, frankly, inflammatory language that I think they inserted in there to, you know, to defend what they were doing.
May I smooth this?
Just since we're cutting a little close on time, what is the city staff's recommendation as far as if we're not comfortable with this wording, what do you think is appropriate? Should we try to amend it tonight, or should we table it and send it back to the creators of the report?
Certainly, I think amending it is, is something that can be done. It looks like Liz has some concerns about, about that, if I can have her allow it.
Yes.
If you don't mind, okay.
I do. Your Honor, and members of council, the plan was approved by the governing body, which is the Policy Committee, and that committee approved that on the 23rd of January. What you all are doing again this evening is more ceremonial. Each of the jurisdictions is being asked to adopt it, and what we would suggest, because it has been approved, we have to have this document approved in order to move forward with any of the projects that are outlined in that plan. If you would like to propose an amendment this evening, that that language be struck from the plan on behalf of Casper, that is allowable, but to table it, we can't do that, because it has been approved through the Policy Committee and has been brought forward to our federal funding partners. And again, the city manager and Councilman Hopkins were part of that decision that was done on the 23rd, so it is moved forward so that we can get our federal funding to do the projects that are on there. So tabling it would be ineffective, I mean, it'd be, it just would not happen, but you may amend it this evening if you would like that language struck on behalf of the Casper community.
So, Mr. Mayor, Liz, is that all it takes, is an amendment-type motion to strike the language, and it's done?
Yes, yes, and that would be what we would submit on behalf of the city of Casper. But if you remember, it came up when Councilman Huber was in the meeting. The project still stays on there, it's got a low priority, it is not going away, it is on there for the next five years, but again, you all could strike the language if you feel that Casper did not say that there was a backlash, that can be corrected, and we can submit that for an amendment.
Councilman Bates.
When we say Casper, do we mean this body here? We talk about Casper, the citizens that they send out, said, do you want this? They responded and said that was a low priority, so the citizens of Casper is who spoke, saying they thought this was a very low priority. Just to be clarified, because if we're striking, if that goes to striking, that's us saying, citizens, you didn't say that. So can you clarify that for me, please?
Excellent point. I do believe it should be that the governing body of the city of Casper is the group that is saying that they want that language struck, because again, we haven't gone into another public engagement process, it did not come up that way. So this body would like to see that language struck, because I believe what Councilman Huber has said, versus I haven't seen what was written, is that it is suggesting that this governing body said that there was a backlash, not that the, I'm assuming that.
Because their language, and I would cite, you know, page two sixteen and two seventeen in their thing, said the city of Casper, not citizens, not, not anything like that, but the city of Casper, to me, that means the corporate entity of the city.
Then I would like that language then in there, because it does not include the pure control house, which is a citizen.
Do you have an idea of what, how you would handle that, Michael, from an administrative standpoint?
Yeah, I, the, the second page of this, actually, you know, when that comes up. Yeah, well, yeah.
You've got an amendment.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, what's, all the having left up on the front.
A quick question, is there a fine for fouling driveways and sidewalks into the street?
Look at that, look at that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if you create a hazard.
Okay, I'll now call the February fourth, 2020 regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by pressing your yes switch?
All members are present.
Council meetings are televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Would you please, is there anybody that would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance tonight? Come on, come forward here.
Uh, will you please follow me in the pledge of allegiance? Aye. Pledge of allegiance.
Into the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 21st, 21st, 2020 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Hopkins. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the February 4th, 2020 bills and claims as audited by city manager Napier.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, we'll move on to bright spots in our community. Uh, we're now going to honor the 100th anniversary of scouting in the Greater Wyoming Council. Is Scout Executive Brad, I'm going to butcher this, Boda, is that it?
Bodo.
Bodo? Okay, and could you please introduce to those, those present with you tonight?
We have scouts and leaders from PAC 13 in Casper, Troop 13 in Casper, and Troop 167 in Casper, and... From Troop, uh, 1310 in Casper.
Okay. Any comments you'd like to make, or?
Well, we're, uh, we're excited to be here tonight and we are honored that the city council is giving us a proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of scouting in Wyoming. Um, the first council in Wyoming, which was originally named the Central Wyoming Council, was chartered in February of 1920. Uh, so we're really excited to be here and to be celebrating our 100th year of serving youth in this community.
Thank you. If y'all don't mind, you can come on up here behind me and I'll read this proclamation to you. Okay, the proclamation says, whereas in 1920, the Greater Wyoming Council, Boy Scouts of America, was formed as a part of the scouting movement throughout America and the world. And whereas, beginning with its incorporation on February 8th, 1910, the mission of the Boy Scouts of America has been to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law, which among other things states the pledge to do duty to God and our country and to help other people at all times. And whereas, the success of scouting has been a culmination of many hours of selfless volunteerism by many leaders and community organizations whose ideas and generosity helped shape the lives of many youth. And whereas, youth from the ages of five to 21 years of age can participate in a program offered through scouting regardless of gender, socioeconomic status, religion, ability or race. And whereas, thousands of service hours have been contributed by scouts and leaders to Casper in its residence. And whereas, the Greater Wyoming Council, the Boy Scouts of America and its core of dedicated volunteer leaders are providing necessary support to the leaders in the COPE Scout Packs and Scouts BSA. Now therefore, I, Stephen Freel, mayor of the city of Casper, do hereby claim, proclaim the year of 2020 as the 100th anniversary year of scouting in the Greater Wyoming Council and encourage all citizens to join in congratulating the many volunteer leaders, parents, church and community organizations who have generously allowed bringing this values-based program to our young people for the last 100 years and many more to come. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Casper, Wyoming, to be affixed this fourth day of February 2020.
Good work.
All right, thank you.
But good work, guys.
Mr. Mayor, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
First off, it's very cool to see some young women who are part of the scouting experience now. What a, what a major change in the scouting program. Um, my younger son, uh, benefited from scouting in ways that continue to impress me. It was a, a great experience for him and made him, in many ways, the young man that he is today. And I don't know that I ever properly thanked all the adults who volunteered their time to be his scout masters, uh, over those years. And all the work that they did to, to teach him the scout law and memorize that scout oath, and more importantly, to be that person who lived those values. And, uh, so I'm going to thank you, all of you, right now. Because what you do is very impressive. It takes, I know it takes a great deal of time. Uh, he was the quartermaster of his troop for three years, so you know what that means. But, uh, it, uh, it is a wonderful program and, uh, I, I salute you and thank you for all of the work that you do.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to communications from persons present. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated in the first page of the agenda, we will ask the following. Please state your name and address. Direct all questions, comments to the mayor and the mayor only. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations will be limited to five minutes and duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Uh, also, please note that public hearings, ordinances, and the resolution tonight addressing the LGBTQ Advisory Committee each have their own comment period. So please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. Is there anybody who would like to approach the podium with any questions? And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of microbrewery license number six. City attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, your honor. We have, uh, five exhibits tonight. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremol to J. Carter Napier dated January 21, 2020. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 27, 2020. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the city of Casper website dated January 21, 2020. Exhibit number four, affidavit of conspicuous posting pursuant Wyoming statute 12 hyphen 4 hyphen 104A, is posted at 612 North Beverly Street dated January 23, 2020. And exhibit number five, liquor license application filed December 16, 2019.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as you have ascertained, this is a license request for a new brewery in town. Uh, this is proposed to be located at 612 North Beverly Street. Uh, this license would effectively go into effect on April 1, at the beginning of the new review period, if you will. But, uh, the reality is that the renovations and so forth will not be complete until May of the same year and would not be approved either until the, um, health license and the brewer's license are obtained as well.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public com, uh, hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of microbrewery license number six, please approach the lectern. Could you state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Eric Magnuson, uh, 2861 Villa Del Ray, Casper, Wyoming, 82604. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for your consideration of, uh, the issuance of this license. Would mean a lot to a few people in the community here. Uh, to me, this is more than just another brewery in this town. Um, to me, it's the culmination of 15 years, um, starting brewing myself and working all the way up, planning, dreaming, and finally getting the chance to do something for myself and the community here. Um, to me, it's more than just a bar or a brewery. Um, I plan to have a space for people, the community, come together, bring your families, and just maybe meet new friends. Um, Casper's still growing in the brewery sector. Um, in currently, we have one brewery per approximately 23,000 residents. Um, our neighbor's up in Sheridan, uh, right now are one brewery to approximately every 6,000 residents. So I believe there's quite a bit more room for breweries here in Casper, even after me, if you so choose. Um, so, uh, once again, I, I thank you for your time. Thank you for considering and, uh, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Pacheco.
Uh, great. I'm glad to have another, um, business in our community that's going to do that. Uh, just real quick question, just getting my bearings, where is it going to be located at again?
Six 12 North Beverly, uh, corner of Beverly and Burlington.
Oh, okay. Great. Awesome. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of? Okay, at this time, I would ask for those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of microbrewery license number six to please approach the lectern. There being no, uh, no one to, uh, no others to speak for or against the issuance of microbrewery lic, liquor license number six, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion by minute action authorize the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number six.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Good luck.
Please read the ordinance, uh, on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 10.24.020 of the Casper municipal code pertaining to 40 mile-per-hour speed zones.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, second by Councilman Hopkins. Council will now listen to public, uh, comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Any public comments? Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? All right, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Moving on to the third reading ordinance of a zone change of Track 4, North Platt River Park Edition, please read the ordinance by third reading, or by reading, third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for a 2.8 acre portion of Track 4, North Platt River Park Edition, generally located at the corner of Vince Drive and North Poplar Street, north of Wilkins Way, from Park Historic PH to C4 Highway Business.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bates, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Uh, council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Anybody to speak on this matter tonight? Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention of Councilmember Huber noted, motion passed.
Uh, third reading ordinance to telecommunication franchise, please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance granting a franchise to NT Tech Incorporated to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Bates. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Anybody here to comment on this one? Okay, any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, council will now discuss the resolution for the LGBTQ Advisory Council. Because this is not on the consent, uh, consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution approaching, pardon me, approving the creation of an LB, LGBTQ Advisory Committee for the city council.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Johnson. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pursuant to, uh, work session on this matter that we had, uh, very recently, staff has prepared, uh, a resolution for your consideration this evening that as the clerk read would, uh, authorize the creation of an advisory council, uh, representing the LGBTQ community that would be ad hoc in its, in its, in its context and, uh, influence and, uh, available for council's use moving forward.
Thank you. The council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Ryan, excuse, excuse me, Ryan McConaughey, 97 Calypso Street. Uh, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to keep, uh, speak on this important topic. I'll keep this short to be respectful of everyone's time. I'm here to speak on behalf of a group in support of the city of Casper's efforts to create the LGBTQ Advisory Council. The group I'm representing includes business and nonprofit leaders, members of the religious community, health experts and educators, students to seniors, Democrats and Republicans, members of the LGBTQ community and allies. We'd like to thank the mayor, members of the council, and the staff of the city manager's office for initiating this effort and working to make sure all Casper residents feel welcome in the community. While in theory, every resident has the ability to stand before you, as I am, and air their concerns, in many cases, that just isn't the case. Whether it's due to family dynamics, fear of losing one's job or housing, the threat of bullying, or simply the fear of the unknown, many LGBT residents do not have the luxury of opening themselves up to sharing their grievances or participating in the political process in a meaningful way. That's why this advisory council is so important. It gives LGBTQ, LGBTQ residents a safe avenue for advocating their... It gives LGBTQ residents a safe avenue for advocating for their needs in the community. It shows some of our most vulnerable residents that they are respected and valued by city leaders. It creates the perception and works towards the reality that Casper is a great place for all people to live, work, and recreate, and frankly, it's just the right thing to do. In the fall of 2019, Casper Pride conducted a survey of LGBTQ issues in Nitrana County and found that the top five were suicide prevention and awareness, bullying, youth support, mental health services, and political representation. Further, the survey showed that nearly 80% of respondents do not currently utilize any services for LGBTQ issues within Nitrana County. This goes to show that there are needs in this community that an advisory council of this type could assist the city in tackling, in turn, creating a better place for all Casper residents. I urge you to vote in support of this advisory council and would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's either side. It's discussion in general. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning or evening, actually, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers.
Could I get your name and address, please?
My name is Linda Bergeron, and my address is 2355 South Larkspur. I stand in opposition to the formation of the LGBTQ Advisory Board. There are fundamental differences between instituting a task force to advise on the needs of the disabled community and a task force to advise on the needs of the LGBTQ community. One addresses very real, practical needs and accommodations of the group of a group of people who have medical diagnoses. Addressing LGBTQ issues isn't based on a diagnosis, standard of care to guide medical or mental health interventions, or federal or state law directing necessary physical accommodations. Addressing the needs of people who are disabled is fundamentally different than addressing the needs of people who identify as LGBTQ or other. LGBTQ issues cannot be identified or verified by anyone other than the person holding the identity, which is quite different from the people who have disabilities the community must address. The LGBTQ identity happens along a spectrum and is identified by the individual alone who possesses and identifies their own individual identity, feelings, orientation, what that means to them and what their needs are. For those reasons, that individual's articulation of what their needs are usually results in controversial debate on how we can balance the fundamental rights of all citizens. Addressing the needs of the LGBTQ individuals cannot be considered in isolation apart from the rights of, for example, parents, educators, faith organizations, and business owners who are all deeply impacted by the LGBTQ agenda, often in controversial ways that are not representative of what the majority wants. Other than that, your points were great. The LGBT Advisory Board will only go in one direction. The board will, of course, make recommendations that increases government by increasing government oversight, regulations, and enforcement, et cetera. Have the people of Wyoming demanded an LGBTQ advisory board to represent them, or is the advisory board a result of a select and very small group of elitists? What are some of the more pressing priorities in Casper other than LGBTQ issues? We have other far more pressing priorities that need to be addressed. The formation of an advisory board does not fall into the category of does no harm. If it is harmless and leads to nothing, why do it? Why waste the effort? If it does harm and is clearly controversial, which is clearly, which it clearly is across the nation, the do no harm argument will not hold. If a group is formed to express LGBTQ activism, is there an avenue for those who sincerely hold that such activism has been one of the primary means to diminish the First Amendment? This is a very controversial subject and must be an open dialogue. I am opposed to the formation of the LGBTQ board. However, if an LGBTQ board should be formed, I am requesting that the meeting dates and times and the location of the meeting be posted on the Casper City Council's website within view of the public. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name's Doug Bergeron. I live at 2355 South Larkspur. And I am also opposed to the formation of this advisory group. I'm also opposed to the way that it was done, that we only had one work session and then one reading to come and have our voices heard and not being on the night that the State of the Union's also being televised. And, but I oppose the formation of this group because it elevates one class of citizens above the rest. It gives one group of people special representation that the rest do not have. The LGBTQ community is not underrepresented, as some are trying to create this narrative. They have the same amount of representatives sitting up there as everybody else in the city. And they have the same opportunities and the same access as what I did. And if I can sit, come down here and sit in front of this, as hard as it is for me to speak, they can do the same thing. And so, where is the advisory boards for all the groups that could be adversely affected by the decisions the council will make based on the advice from this board? Being the churches and the businesses and the other citizens that will have their freedom of speech or conscience affected? Are we going to create boards for all those to where we're all on an even plane again? What steps is this council going to take to protect our freedom of speech and our freedom of conscience? What happens if they start adding letters to their group name? Does the council have to approve that? Or are you going to take advice from a group that just adds any behavior to their name? Is there a limit to it? Has anybody thought of that? And I just, that's probably all I got to say right now, but I oppose it, and I don't think it's right to elevate one class above another. We all have the same amount of representatives, and we all have the same opportunity to come down here. I appreciate your stance on that in the work session.
Any questions? Comments? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Hello?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Caitlin Yonkers, and my address is 3436 Whispering Springs Road, and I am for forming it for the LGBT community. Because, as people say, we people are shunned away from speaking out because people tell us that it is not okay to not be straight when you can't choose who you love. I believe it is important that the LGBTQ has someone to represent them and help their voices be heard. As freedom of speech is not provided for us because people say that just because of who we love, we should not be classified as citizens. And I don't think that is fair for people who want to speak out and be politically active. And that we should have rights as human beings to vote, to have someone represent us, to help our voices be heard. And that it is so important for people to realize that you cannot choose who you love and that we should not be pushed down for not being straight. And that it is not pushing what gay people, queer people, over other citizens because we are actually undermined by other citizens. And that I believe we should all have equal rights and not be pushed down. Thank you.
Anyone else on this issue? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Connie Cropsy, 940 Waterford. The Constitution guarantees equal rights for all. The Pledge of Allegiance says liberty and justice for all. Please preserve all those rights for the citizens of Casper. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Discussion. Councilman Powell.
Johnson.
Or Johnson. Sorry.
We look alike, Charlie.
Yeah.
I still have some here.
Yeah, so. Councilman Johnson.
I just want to say that this is strictly an advisory council, okay? They don't, this group isn't going to have any legal authority. They can't pass law. It is strictly an advisory council. It's a group of citizens, marginalized citizens, that are exercising their First Amendment right to assemble and petition their government. That's all it is. Any group has that right. These people are a part of our community, okay? These people are law enforcement officers, they're firefighters, medical staff, business owners, people that cook your food, sell you your clothes. This group has been marginalized, had their personal business even criminalized, for hundreds of years. So to say that we're elevating one group above another, to me, is just completely not even in the ballpark because this group has been so marginalized for hundreds and hundreds of years. So to create an advisory council, to me, is just a very minuscule thing that we could do to help a marginalized group of citizens have their voices heard. So I'm going to be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I even remembered to turn on the microphone. I'll be supporting this. I understand that there are people with very strong feelings on all sides of this issue. As I've considered this over the last few weeks, I can't help but be reminded that in what I consider the modern period of time here in the state of Wyoming, back in the 1950s, there was a very popular, very well-liked United States senator, former governor of the state of Wyoming, who committed suicide when there was a threat that if he didn't withdraw from running for reelection, his son would be outed as a gay, as a homosexual in those days. That's pretty darn recent history if you look at the big picture of things. And so, as Councilman Johnson spoke about, you know, many of these people are folks who have been marginalized, who have been criminalized, who have been dealt with in all sorts of ways. And I can very well understand, you know, one of the greatest fears in the whole world that people talk about is the fear of public speaking. And sir, I appreciate you saying, you know, it's tough for you to get up and talk in public. That's a big fear that everybody has. But compound onto that, that you know that people like you have had horrible things done to them, family members like Senator Hunt. I think that, you know, having this commission is a very good positive thing. I want everybody in this community to feel totally free to approach their government in whatever way they can, to let us know what they think about every issue under the sun. And anything that we can do to help that happen, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Mr. Mayor Lutz, were you waiting?
No, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to point out that the first concern, based on the survey, was the high suicide rate of people in the LGBTQ community. And if this committee can come up with some ideas to help us with that problem and prevent a single suicide, that's enough reason by itself. So I, as I'm sure you all are aware, I'm very much in support of this. But I also want to speak to my fellow council members about this. Because currently, if an African American presents at a restaurant and the restaurateur refuses to serve that person because they are African American, they can be cited and If the restaurant owner does the same thing to a woman who they don't want to serve because they only want to serve men, they can be fined. However, if a gay couple walks into a restaurant holding hands and a restaurant owner refuses to serve them, they haven't broken any laws. If a landlord says, "I'm sorry, I don't rent to gay couples," there's no remedy for them because we have not addressed that problem. And people talk about First Amendment rights. Well, the reason that you can't discriminate on the base of race or gender is because everyone should have the same rights as far as access to housing, access to employment, and access to resale establishments. In Casper, that is not the case. And that is the case in several of our sister municipalities who have found the courage to address these very problems. And we should as well. And I have gone on public, I certainly don't need a LGBTQ advisory committee to give me instructions on whether or not I should support an ordinance like this because I've had this view for a long time. And I believe that this is a good step. It's good to have that, those voices heard. It's good to give a message that people who aren't here tonight will also get the message that, hey, the leaders of the city government think you are real people and belong here. But also, as I've said publicly, messages to people outside of Casper that this is a welcoming place. And it's a place that wants all of its citizens to feel that they have a role to play. But I do believe that at some point, we should address the absence of an ordinance that makes it illegal to discriminate based on gender identity and sexual orientation. And I hope that we do that sooner rather than later.
Councilman Cassidy.
Along the lines of what has been said is that LGBTQ may be underserved, discriminated against, but so are the blacks, so are the Mexican-Americans, so are the indigenous people here. Veterans have a higher-than-normal suicide rate. Indigenous people have higher-than-average suicide rate. So I don't see why a higher-than-average suicide rate would necessarily lead to needing a special advisory council. I believe this should be a human rights council and that all people of, say, a minority status should be welcome to that committee as well so that you can see how they are also mistreated, for lack of a better term. I'm not always the most eloquent. But as I stated earlier as well, I think this is a very open community, and I stated it in the work session the other night. I don't know how many people in here know that there's an LGBTQ community member that's on... on that wall right over there. One person. We have had a mayor in this city that was an LGBTQ community participant, member, whatever you want to say, and was open about it. So we are an open community. We have a lack of knowledge of where these people are, who they are, and most people don't even recognize it because they're based on their character. And that's what we're supposed to be basing things on. If you have good character, you will be respected and you move on. But if you are not, then I don't care who you are, whether you're, what, race, religion, or anything else. And at this point right now, how many people are aware that there is actually a case in the United States Supreme Court that is looking at actually applying the LGBT community to the sex discrimination portion of the Federal Equal Rights Act? How many people realize that? Two or three? Very good. I'm glad to see that. Very good. So at least we are informed and involved from that standpoint. I think that's great. And if this is a Human Rights Commission, Committee, I could support that, but singling out LGBTQ, I have issues with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, other council members.
Councilman Bates.
I haven't hit it in any way, shape, or form. I totally agree with the Human Rights Advisory Board, because you take a 5'9" woman, male, black, white, Christian, Muslim, gay, lesbian, whatever you want to do, put them behind an X-ray machine, full body, and I'll ask anybody to tell me who is who. How do you know? You couldn't, because we are all humans. We are all equal. So I believe in equality, and I think the Human Rights Advisory Board brings equality to Casper. Casper is, Wyoming's known for the equality state. So I agree with that. Everybody deserves the freedom. Freedom of speech, freedom of being who they are without any issues. Anybody being pushed down, I disagree with. I don't care who you are. Being pushed down, not accepted, not welcomed, whether it's in a restaurant, whether it's getting an apartment, everybody should. I believe in that. Everybody has rights, and we have all the equal rights. So I am absolutely for the Human Rights Advisory. I don't know how many of you read that or heard that we were considering that, and how many, any of you guys, anybody watching on TV, was against that, a Human Rights Act, Human Rights Advisory Board. It includes everybody. But I do want to say, and I do want this echoed, if council still chooses to go with the LGBTQ, then I encourage black, white, gay, lesbian, anything in the entire world, you want an advisory board, come down, speak to Carter, speak to the mayor, and we will set that up. We should set that up. If we're going to set one up, we better start a whole line and accept every single one of them. Every single one. So in all honesty, if we start one, well, we did disability, but I get the disability. Totally get it. LGBTQ, I'm not against it. I just think it should be part of the Human Rights Group Advisory, but anybody wants to start one, then I say, welcome, come on down. I'll support you. I'll support this, I'll support that, I'll support whatever you guys bring. If we want to do Human Rights Advisory, I support that as well. That's where I stand.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
And I don't think anyone that would argue that we're against a Human Rights Advisory Council. I mean, that's absolutely not the truth. I think it's just the thing of, and you said it, but in a different way. If we're going to argue that all human rights are all human rights and they need to be in an advisory council that is that, then having disabilities separate is absolutely not appropriate. Because what you're arguing is that one special interest group has more rights than another, and that's exactly what we're saying is not okay. So I don't think that they can both survive outside of that. I think if you're going to say that the LGBTQ community does not need their own representation and that they need to be part of a larger group that is associated with human rights, then that includes absolutely every subset of any type of special interest. They cannot remain separate.
Councilman Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. So some of the phone calls and emails that I've received have said, everybody's equal. There's no prejudice in Casper. We're a welcoming community. I would welcome anybody to look at the Facebook posts that have been since this came up. I challenge you to go back to the Oil City, the Casper Star Tribune on Facebook, and look at the despicable comments that were made and disparaging to the LGBTQ community. If we truly lived in a community that was welcoming to all participants, black, brown, Latinas, Latinos, gay, lesbian, transgendered, those comments would not be on Facebook in this community. Diversity does not make us weaker. Diversity makes us stronger. When we look and we see that we can work together and collaborate and communicate with all groups, we have an understanding of one another, and we can disagree, but we can work together. This is the paramount issue facing our country today, you against them, them against us. If you don't believe in what we believe in, I'm going to break you. I will destroy you. That is what the theme is. Look on Twitter. Our hope, our desire as a community, is to work together. Creating an advisory committee like this is not the end of the world. More beautiful than that, it's an opportunity to collaborate and to work together. I also challenge you, since people say, well, we don't have any prejudice against women or any prejudice against black people, do you see that on our Facebook posts? Do you see that against women constantly? But it's easy to target the LGBTQ community and say that. I've said this many times, and I will always say this, I was taught to be Christ-like. And to Christ-like means that you embrace people, that you love people, that you show compassion, and you work together. I will be supporting this commission and this advisory committee, and I think it's an opportunity for us to grow. And if there are other people that do come to say, we want a committee to talk, if it's a committee that chooses to make Casper better, but if somebody comes to say, I want to create a committee that's going to be something harmful for the community, how does that make that happen? My hope is, is that we work better. My hope is, is that those Facebook posts go away and that we have a better community. We have to work together. Democrats, Republicans, independents, libertarians, every single one of us, we have to, to make this world better. We have to do that. That is why I'm supporting this committee, this committee. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Just along the lines of a Human Rights Committee, excuse me, Human Rights Advisory Council. It would work if people actually treated everybody as a human being, but that's not what's happening. And to me, it waters down the issues facing each individual group. The LGBTQ community faces different challenges than the African-American community, than the Jewish community, than the Christian community. So to lump them all into one thing, to me, just waters down the issue completely and ignores it. It puts it in a category to make yourself feel good about yourself, yay, we created a Human Rights Council, but it really doesn't do anything. So if other people want to come down, other marginalized groups that want to come down and form advisory councils, I'm for that, too.
Okay, well, I'll give you my two cents on the whole thing. You know, I can look out in this crowd tonight, and I see a lot of people here that I've known professionally, that are part of this community, and I've worked with in a professional manner, and I've learned a lot from. I also see people that I've known since I was knee-high to a grasshopper with them and, you know, played in the same social circles with them. When I first came into this advisory group and sat down for the first time, my whole question was, why do I need this committee? I've got plenty of people that I know that are part of this community, that if I have an issue, I can go and I can talk to those people and I can get the answers that I need. But the true answer to that is, I'm not going to be here forever, and neither is everybody else in this council. And, you know, who's the future leaders that may come in here and not want to listen? And, you know, they could take this resolution and make it go away, just as fast as we bring it in here. To go back on a previous career in law enforcement, I have to tell you that probably one of the biggest lessons I learned was when I was working with the alcohol dealers here in town. And we're still, we still have a committee to this day that Vice Mayor Lutz is on, that deals with the Nitrana County Alcohol Task Force, or not Task Force, but the alcohol dealers. And the role that I was in was to sit down and change laws or make laws that affect alcohol. And the one point that was made to me at that point during those discussions was that I'm law enforcement, and sure, I know how to make the law work, but I'm not in the hospitality industry, and I don't know how changes to laws affect the bottom line or affect the liquor dealers in their own right. And so I really learned at that point in time that, you know, it's, you know what you know. And every issue that comes up, shame on us if we don't look at every avenue that we possibly can, to get all the information we need to make the right decisions. So when I look at this advisory committee itself, why would I not want one? This is an advisory committee, not somebody that comes, a group that comes in and is pushing for laws to be changed. These are people that, when we have an issue that comes forward, we can sit down and say, how does this issue affect you? How does it affect your community? I'll tell you, I'm not, I'm not part of the LGBTQT community. So if the people that have emailed me today, have called me today, and have told me, you should not move forward with this, essentially are saying that I should not listen to what this committee has to say. And so then I come back on my own thoughts to make a decision, which is not fair for me to not get all angles of any issue that comes up. It's not fair to somebody. The amount of our knowledge that we have is what limits us. And so to me, I look at this committee as another tool for us to sit down and ask, how does this affect us? Just like I ask alcohol dealers, how does that affect you? And I even brought it up today in another phone conversation, that if there were an issue, and, you know, one of the persons I talked to was dealing with their church. And if an issue came up with their church, am I supposed to just cut that out and just go by with what I know, what my church tells me, or should I listen to your viewpoint or what you have to say? I reached out to my own church today, and two weeks ago, when we started this last conversation, they actually sat down and had a conversation of, where do we head from here? This is a question we need to answer. And at the end of the day, what I was told was, you know, they love people unconditionally, and it doesn't matter who you are or what you're made up of. So the way I look at this, I'm going to vote in favor of it tonight, and the reason I'm going to, is this is a, I look at it as another mechanism that, since day one I've been on council, I've said, any issue that comes up, I want to get every side of the issue, educate myself on the issue, so that the decision that I make is the right decision that affects everybody properly. And anything less than that, or cutting any category out to where I don't get needed information in there to make the proper decision, would be an injustice to that person. So that's what I have to say on that.
Anybody else have discussion? Councilman Pacheco.
Thanks, Mayor. Just really quickly, I also want to make something very clear, too, that if it's not been expressed, there are a couple of people have mentioned, and I know this is in the reso, some people have expressed, well, you've been approached by this small percentage of LGBTQ community members, and they twisted your arm to create this group. I want to make it clear, too, that the city saw something that was needed in our community, and we approached the LGBTQ community to say, this is something we want to collaborate with. So if there's any narrative that's out there in the paper, in the press, or somebody trying to create that narrative, that's not what happened. It was very clear that we wanted to collaborate, and we approached the LGBT, LGBTQ community and asked them to collaborate with us, and this is our idea to say, this is a better way for us to work together. So I wanted to make that very clear.
Any further discussion? Any amendments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Kathy.
I'd like to propose an amendment to change this to a Human Rights Advisory Committee rather than an LGBTQ Advisory Committee.
Councilman Kathy would like to, so do we put that in a form of...
You need a second.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
So I have a motion made by Councilman Kathy to change this from an LGBTQ community, or a committee, to a Human Rights Committee, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Do a vote on that, or discussion? Do we have discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, while at some point in time, a Human Rights Advisory Board might be a good idea sometime in the future, I think that that would have the effect of watering down the significance of this proposal. And I think this is an important enough issue that it should not be watered down any. So I will be voting against this amendment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Bates.
Like I said before, I totally agree with it. I don't believe it's watering it down. I think it's opening opportunities and more equality. So again, I'm in favor of this. I'm not against creating anything. I just think it's better if we have it all together, so I support it.
Councilman Johnson.
Just to reiterate what I said before, and what Councilman Huber and Councilman Pacheco also said, is that this change would water it down. And then you run into the issue of, well, who controls that group? And does that group get to exclude other groups because they're in control of the group? So to me, it's going to become this game of politics and power over this one group that's going to represent all of these minority groups that have different, very different issues. So I'm not in favor of this amendment.
Any further discussion? All right, so we'll take a vote on that. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With council members Kathy, Bates, and Hopkins voting aye, motion to amend fails.
Which brings us back to the original resolution, so any other amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With council members Bates, Kathy, and Hopkins voting nay, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Mr. Mayor, if I might interrupt. I note that that long-range transportation plan is on the consent agenda... I note that that, the long-range transportation plan is on the consent agenda. I apologize for not asking earlier that that be taken off the consent agenda, so that we can consider what I had earlier spoken about.
Mr. City Manager, do we need to take that off of there, or can amendment be made?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that that item be removed from consent, so that indeed the idea of amending that particular motion could be adequately addressed. So I think, Mr. Mayor, that would be done in the form of a motion to remove this item from consent and considered separately, if you will, from the consent agenda as presented.
I would so move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huber, second by Councilman Cathy. We need to vote on that, or? Okay, any discussion on that? All right, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion to remove that item from the consent agenda passed.
Okay, now, please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9B2, approving service contracts with Digital Skylines River Oaks Communications Corporation and Sublight Engineering for wireless communication facility reviews. Item 9B3, authorizing a contract with PCN Strategies for police video equipment. Item 9B4, authorizing an agreement with Dave Load and Construction for the 2020 Roof Replacements Project. And item 9B5, authorizing a contract with Bandwidth Logic for an antenna system for the Casper Event System. Center.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Cathy. City manager would like to make any comments on these items? Are there any abstention or nay votes? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Mr. Manager, do we come back to that item then, by itself?
Mr. Mayor, I think that council could certainly consider that amendment now, or the, or you could go through the second section and then come back, whatever you'd prefer.
Do it now.
Let's do it now, beings who are there, so.
We're thinking about it.
So could you please read the single consent item that we pulled by title only?
Approving and adopting the long-range transportation plan.
Chair would adopt, or would entertain a motion to adopt a consent resolution just read.
So move.
No.
Yeah, we have to move in seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I have discussion.
Moved by Councilman Bates, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Councilman Johnson. City manager, do you have any comments on this one?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was a proposal that this particular plan be amended with the redaction of certain language, and with that deferred to, to the council to direct us in that regard.
Okay, Councilman Huber, you have an amendment you'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. What my motion would be, and I would call your attention in our packet, two pages, 216 and 217, which deals with the East Belt Loop Road. And what I would move is that the second, and that under the category of East Belt Loop Road, that the second, third, and fourth paragraphs be deleted. And I, if there's a second, I'll explain why I move that those be deleted. I would further move that the fourth paragraph on, which is on page 217, be, be also deleted and replaced with a paragraph that would read simply, that given the opposition of landowners and the high cost of the proposed project, the East Belt Loop Road has been moved to a low priority on the list of long-term projects. And, and just completely replace that, replace that fourth paragraph with that shorter paragraph.
All right, so the amendment has been put on the table by Councilman Huber, seconded by Councilman Cathy. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, by way of explaining my purpose in this, I would note that the second paragraph in this matter, which is one of the paragraphs that I want to have deleted, states, and I believe that this is very inaccurate, that the East Belt Loop Project has met with backlash from the city of Casper, not just from people, but from the city of Casper. And then it goes on and on, and it talks, it talks about that this road would violate the adopted comprehensive land use plan and a bunch of other things. That the language in this plan that was written by this, this consultant that did this seems to me to try to imply that the city is only concerned about comprehensive planning within the core area, redevelopment kind of areas and things like that, and that the city of Casper is not concerned about comprehensive planning of, for future growth, future geographic growth, and things like that. And I think that that's inaccurate. I think it's misleading. I don't understand why they inserted all of these paragraphs in here and, and flowered all this up, frankly, other than, you know, just something that in future years would allow somebody to sit there and say, oh, aha, look, the city vigor, you know, had a backlash against this, and it violated all of these other planning things, which I don't believe that it does. And so that's why I'm proposing that we delete those three paragraphs, and that we replace that final paragraph with my proposed language. And, and having said all of that, I really do want to compliment the, the committee that worked hard on this. You know, this plan has some great stuff in it for all over the community, all over the county, really some good things. Lot of hard work went into this. I don't want, I don't mean to take anything away from any of that. But I think that with reference to, and I'm not suggesting, you know, well, my personal preference would be that the priority of that East Belt Loop Road be different than what it is. You know, I've lost that battle, but I just don't think that this, what I consider to be gratuitous additional language in here, is accurate. I don't think that it adds anything to the report, and I think it should be stricken and replaced, as I've suggested. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'd like to echo Councilman Huber's remarks. I do think that those statements were inaccurate and need to be corrected. Essentially, there were some, several landowners that objected very strenuously to the East Belt Loop Project for all, for very understandable reasons, but there's a larger good at stake here. But I also want to compliment the planners. For those who haven't had a chance to look at this, there was a fair amount of emphasis placed upon pedestrian travel. And we do have some very significant challenges in Casper with respect to pedestrian travel. We have far too many pedestrians injured, few have been killed through carelessness or just lack of awareness of pedestrians. And, and there, and as I've said publicly, there are people who simply won't ride their bicycles in Casper because they don't believe it's safe. And so this, this plan does place a real emphasis on looking forward and trying to develop other modes of transportation. So, and I, and I think it is very, very thorough plan, and I encourage any of you who haven't looked at it, take a look at it, because it's going to be our guiding document for at least the next five years and probably beyond. But I do agree with Councilman Huber's amendment, and I'm, I appreciate him bringing it forward.
Any other discussion? Okay, any abstentions or nay votes? All right, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the Consent Minute action titles.
No, Mr. Mayor, we need to come back to the main motion to adopt the, that was the vote on, on my amendment. The main, we need to come back and vote on the main motion.
All right. All right, so back to the main motion.
I can't quit being a voice.
I know, I know.
He was just running one by you.
All right, so any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, any abstentions or nay votes on it? All right, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
See, when you change the script, it makes it a little difficult. All right, now, please read the Consent Minute action titles.
Item 10A1, acknowledging the receipt of financial disclosure information. Item 10A2, the purchase of a two-by-four cab and chassis truck from Floyd's Truck Center. Item 10A3, authorizing the discharge of uncollectible accounts receivable balances. Item 10A4, issuing a taxi cab company license to Oil City Cabs. And item 10A5, authorizing the appointments to the council's boards and commissions.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Minute action items just read.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bates. Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, we ask councilmembers to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Bates.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Powell.
I'm sure others will comment on this as well. Once again, thank you to our city crews for all of the work they did to keep our streets drivable in a very, very challenging environment. We take them for granted all too often, and they worked very long hours in difficult conditions with the wind blowing the snow right back onto the roads that they had just plowed. And that happens over and over again, and they just keep at it and keep at it. And so they all deserve our thanks.
Councilman Cathy.
I would like to echo Councilman Powell's comments about the, the city services and the plow drivers. They did an excellent job. I would also like to remind the public, you cannot plow your snow into the street. I have watched three different people this last week plowing their snow into the roads that we plow, which means now my tax money and your tax money is going to pick that snow up and haul it off. That needs to stop. Your snow needs to stay on your property. And one other thing is, I would like to congratulate the character of this young lady right here for standing up for what she believes in. I apologize. I apologize for not knowing your name, but you were soft enough when you started, and I'm hard enough hearing, I did not catch it. But I do want to thank you for having the courage to stand up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yes, thank you for the comments, Councilman Powell, about the hard workers. I know, getting that early morning text from our city manager saying, it's critical, but we're doing our best, and they did. So thank you so much. Please pass that along from us. We get to sit in our ivory towers and over here making these rules and laws and stuff, and so, thank you. Please pass that along to them. Yeah, so I work with youth. That's been my life. Been doing that, I've been a teacher, been all kinds of stuff, social worker, all those types of things. I cannot say that I know what the LGBTQ community goes through. I can say, though, from a perspective as a Hispanic, knowing that unfortunately, there are outlined prejudices in, in our community, in our country, in our state. My only hope is, and I've been driven more for, and I'm speaking to you, my hope is, is that your generation, because what year were you born?
I was born in 2006.
Okay, so you're Gen Z, and I've been doing a lot of studying about your generation. My hope lies in your generation. Because my kids are your generation, and my hope lies in you guys to make a difference. And that means facing things that are sometimes not fun, standing up for things that are not easy, being courageous when you know there are a lot of people that will say things against you. But my hope is in Gen Z. Because your generation, although gets hit by a lot of the older generation by saying, oh, you know, they do these weird things on TikTok and blah, blah, blah. Which you do, but it's fantastic. But your generation will change the world.
I don't think that we exceed your expectations here.
You will. I know it, because I see it in you guys, and I work with you guys every day. So your generation will change the world, and I hope and pray for that. Thank you.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's TikTok?
Oh, goodness.
I, I just, I, you know, democracy and government is about a lot of different things, and it's, and it's messy, and all that we ever do is we try to do the best things, and we try to accomplish the best things that we can. The only way that we can do that is for everybody to have mutual respect for those with differing opinions and who come from differing points of view. And, you know, the only thing I can tell you is that as an elected representative, and I know, I think I speak for everybody else up here at least, all we can try to do is just the best that we can to represent our community. And, and, and try to do that to the, the very best level that we can. And part of that best level is to listen to people, to, and to take into account varying points of view, and, and then make the best judgment that we can. And I really think that, you know, our country and the world would be better if everybody followed the, the model that I believe, and that I am very proud that I see on this council, and that I have seen for a great many years on, on city councils here in Casper. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I think everything's been said, so I have nothing else to say.
Councilman Hopkins.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. One thing I would add is echo what streets have done, but I also want to thank everything that, you know, emergency services have been out there the whole time, helping out. The PD itself, in fact, when the police, there was a couple of police officers were actually hit by a drunk driver the other night, and, and several people went to the hospital and that. So again, we appreciate what they do, you know, hate to see when that, that type of an activity happens, but just pass on to them, too. You know, it's hard work and throughout these hard-weatherish times, so. That's all I have for tonight. So the next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, in the council's meeting room. Inter regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, in the council chambers. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Huber. Please cast your vote. And please record your vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
This meeting is adjourned.